All those meeting the order, City of Groves, notice of arraignment of City Council, City Council Chamber, Grove City Hall, March 27th, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. If you'd all rise for prayer and pledge.
I thank you, God, tonight for these your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, and our city council members. I give thanks for the way of service that they have chosen to take upon behalf of all of those of us here. We all come to this room tonight as complex human beings carrying burdens, and so we pray that you would be glorified tonight through the decisions of this city council. Defend their cause, oh God, through this governing body tonight. In Jesus's name we believe and pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, always full with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. The world's city clerk.
Mayor Born.
Here.
Mayor Proton McGavin. Councilmember Dugis.
Here.
Councilmember Oliver.
Here.
Councilmember.
Thank you. Welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Item four on the agenda will be for 13th, 2023 City Council meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 13th, 2023 City Council meeting.
Let's start it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the March 13th, 2023 City Council meeting. Do we have any questions? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Proton McGavin.
Aye.
Councilmember Benzil.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugis.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item five, we received the minutes of the March 20th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Committee. Everybody got a copy of them?
Make a motion that we receive the minutes of March 20th, 2023 Planning and Zoning meeting.
I say aye. We don't need the motion to receive the minutes. I believe so.
I think it is received.
Yeah, so thank you for your motions, but we don't have to have a motion. Item six, Andrew Porch.
Mayor Council, Libby was on duty due to a prior engagement, so she asked me to give you all a report on the weekend Spring Fest. First, I want to let mayor and council members know that I appreciate them coming out to support the 2023 Spring Fest. I want to thank Sadie and Miss Stephanie for keeping me sane and helping me. I want to give a big thanks to our parks department for keeping Lions Park looking wonderful. Also, thank Aaron Rocker for creating the vendor map. He had to make many adjustments throughout the planning process, and he did an excellent job. The community came out to support the event, which made all our hard work. We not have an exact number of how many attended, but the vendors all stated they had very good sales. They had a total of 45 vendors who participated in the day. Three did not show up. At this time, I have not heard as to why. They had a wonderful DJ, one-up production. May Carey Paul's a poet, picked by Karen with the Easter Bunny pictures. They sent surveys to all the vendors and so forth, feedback. From Stephanie about the same thing. They're grateful for property maintenance, Michael, Justin, and Sean, the activity building part-time staff, Josh, Evan, Jackson, Jocelyn, for their help contributing to the success of the event. Through advertising jobs, though, through advertising jobs at our booth, we were able to set up an interview with a very qualified applicant who was from Groves. We are hoping it works out. Also, we educated several people on our summer program that sent applications to those interested this morning. The summer program, by the way, is a program that we've had for several years now to hire still part-time seniors and juniors to help with property maintenance. So if anybody has any of those qualified, just ask them. But those are the reports I have from them.
Did Libby put down, did she make any notation or does she know yet financially how the Spring Fest came out?
I think she's waiting to hear back from the vendors. As far as I know for expense-wise, I don't think there was an expense to the city because of the charge to the vendors, but I can clarify that with her on that.
I'd like to know if she made any profit off of it.
I think she might have, but we found out a thing with the food truck business. We had to pay a permit fee, but it was the $20 permit fee that we charged them. So we didn't make any of that off of them because it went back to the health inspection a little bit, but I'm sure that there is something from the other vendors. I can get her to get that for you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Any other reports? Yes, sir, absolutely.
So, one of my main plans is to be bright, be brief, and be going. We're doing the one we're doing this month is on the country of Somalia, and it's a mess. So I cut it down to about three to five minutes, but you could talk about it for months. In January of 1991, Somali President Mohammed Said Bahir was overthrown by a coalition of opposing clans leading to the Somali war. The main rebel group in Mogadishu was the United Somali Congress, which split into two factions, one led by Ali Mohammed, who later became president, and the other by Mohammed Adid, which became known as the Somali National Congress. The resulting civil war caused the destruction of Somalia's agriculture, starvation in large parts of southern Somalia. Operation Provide Relief began in August of 1992. American C-130 delivered 48,000 tons of food and supported the UN relief effort in Somalia. Relief flights into Somalia were offaluted as soon as they hit the ground by militants. In response, the United Nations passed Resolution 794, which paved the way for a more robust multinational operation called Operation Restore Hope. So then we had the Battle of Mogadishu, which started in 1993. On 5th June, 1993, a Dees militia and Somali citizens at radio Mogadishu attacked a Pakistani force that were there to inspect an arms cache located at the station. What transpired became a seminal moment in what was called Unison Two Operations, which is the United Nations in Somalia. United Nations Pakistani forces suffered 24 dead and 57 wounded. In response, the Security Council passed Resolution 837, calling for the arrest and prosecution of those responsible for their attack on those peacekeepers. The United Nations blamed Mohammed Adid and his faction for the incident. U.S. forces in Mogadishu launched the Abdi House raid to capture Adid on 12 July in 1993. That raid caused Adid to deliberately attack American personnel for the first time on August the 8th of 1993. President Clinton then dispatched Task Force Ranger to capture Adid. The Battle of Mogadishu, now known as Black Hawk Down, was fought on 3/4 October 1993 between United Nations-supported United States military and the forces of the Somali National Alliance. On 3 October 1993, they planned to seize two of Adid's high-ranking lieutenants. The raid was only intended to last an hour. Somali forces shot down three Black Hawk helicopters using RPGs. At that time, the battle caused the largest loss of U.S. troops since the Vietnam War. Casualties were 18 American soldiers, 73 wounded, with coalition forces suffering two dead and nine wounded. Estimates of Somali casualties were set between 315 and 2,000 casualties, including civilians. After the battle, dead civilians, dead American soldiers were seen dragged through the streets of Mogadishu on American television. That battle shifted American policy and led to the pullout of the United Nations in 1995. And that was basically what happened there was we were going down the same path, and anyone who's ever done those sorts of things, whether you did it on tanks or on foot, you know, you always go down, you go out in one direction, you come back in the other direction. You don't ever set a precedent that your enemy can catch on to you. And that's exactly what they did. They were out there, and they had a lot of teams of people that knew where we were going and where we flew and the routes that we took. Since 2007, yeah, that wasn't the enemy. Since 2007, the United States military invention has targeted militant groups, mainly Al-Shabaab, using drone stracks and missiles lost from naval ships. Airstrikes were rammed up dramatically during the Trump administration. Late 2020, yes, President Trump announced that he would pull most troops out of Somalia by 15th of January 2021, and it was completed on the 17th of January. In May 2022, President Joe Biden accepted a request from the Pentagon to redeploy soldiers to Somalia to combat the terrorist group Al-Shabaab. In January 2023, a military raid ordered by President Joe Biden killed senior Islamic State member Bilal Al-Sulani and 10 other insurgents. In February of 2023, just a month and a half ago, 1912 Al-Shabaab members were killed about 300 miles north of Mogadishu. Training of allied forces, limited airstrikes, and special operations activity continues to this day. A lot of folks don't realize the United States Army is in 93 countries at any one given time. So we're not just in the places that you see on TV. So that's what we're doing, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other reports? Any citizen comments? Any citizen comments? Item seven, eight, we receive the fiscal year ending 2022 annual financial report from the city auditor.
Mayor and council, Mr. Pat Lozino, representing Lockman, DeShawn, and Yonker, is here. They are our city auditor. The city auditor reports directly to the city council. My role is only to assist them with the audit.
Good afternoon. I've got what I call a cliff note version of that 60 or 70-page report that I'm going to pass out to you, and then if there's any other pages that y'all want to talk about, we'll certainly be glad to do that as well. There was a change to the auditor's report this year, first time in about 25 years that they've made a significant change to it, and the first place there is where most of the changes are related to the new report. It tries to spell out a little bit in more detail what an audit entails. So it says in performing an audit, and of course, we generally said that auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, we use our professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism, identify and assess risks of material misstatements of the financial statements, obtain an understanding of the internal controls relevant to the audit, evaluate the appropriate accounting policies used and reasonableness of those accounting estimates, and conclude whether in our judgment there are any condition or events considered that would raise substantial doubt about the city's ability to continue as a growing concern, which is, do we think you're going to be able to continue to operate for the next 12 months? I'm not sure on some of those bank audits that we're having, seeing the failures in the paper, one of them had received a clean audit of any two weeks before it blew up on them, so I don't know. Some of the auditors are getting a little grip over that, I'm sure, but. The next page, page two, is a summary of the audit report. This is required, since you have a single audit, this audit is going to be uploaded to the Federal Clearing House, and they require the summary page so that the people reviewing those audits can go to a snapshot and see if there's anything that they need to see in the audit that is of a concern. So the first part there, the type of auditor's report issued, unmodified, that's what we call a clean opinion when it's unmodified, we haven't been making modifications to it. Our opinion was that the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the city and the result of operations for the 12 months ended September 30th. So that's what we call a clean opinion on the audit report. Then we also have a report about the internal controls for governmental auditing standards, were there any material weaknesses identified? No. Any significant deficiencies identified? None. Then we have, as it relates to the federal awards, since y'all received over $750,000 of federal money during the year, we're required to do what they call a single audit, and there's additional looking at the material, were there any material weaknesses related to the federal money? No. Any significant deficiencies related to the federal awards? None reported. So those are all the answers you'd like to have. Like I said, it is a clean report, and then are there any findings disclosed that are required to be reported under Title II, which is the single audit requirement? No, there were no findings related to the major program for federal award purposes, which was the Community Development Block Grant. We have to list that as well. And auditee qualified is a low-risk auditee down at the bottom of the page. Page three is the schedule of federal awards. This is the money that y'all expended from the federal government. Some of it comes straight from the government, some of it being passed through. Like the Community Development Block Grant was passed through the Texas General Land Office, but it's still considered federal money. It's just there to flow through the agency board. $1.2 billion. The cutoff, like I said, is if you're over $750,000, then you're required to have that single audit, additional work done. Page four is a snapshot of the government balance sheet. It's called a saving of debt position as of September 30th, 2022 and 2021. The left-hand, two columns is the governmental activities, which is your general fund, your police, your fire, your EDC, your debt service fund. Those are all considered governmental activities. The middle two columns are what we call business-type activities, that's your water and sewer and your solid waste funds. And then we have the total columns out to the right-hand side. Total assets at the end of 2022, about four lines, four or five lines down, $52.8 billion compared to $49.2 the year before. The net pension asset was a big swing. It was this $3,850,000 compared to $181,000 last year. That's not really under y'all's control. That's where you've sent money to, I believe it's the TMRS is who y'all use for your pension. You send money to them monthly based on the salaries that you have, then they invest it and look at what the pension obligation is going to be as those employees retire. And based on their report that we use, there was an asset where the money you had put over there has grown to $3 billion more than what they're projecting out at this point that's going to be required to pay those pensions. Those valuations were done as of December 31st, 2021, even though this is a September 30th, 2022 report. That's there if you're in, and that's the most recent report, and under auditing standards, that's what we're required to use because it's done by their actuary, and it's not something that we can calculate as of September 30th. I would caution you, I'm pretty sure that number's going to drop down. If you remember, at the end of 2021, that's when inflation started, when the war in Ukraine and all that stuff started, and the market went down in early 2022, that'll be on your next year's valuation, since this is as of December of 2021 for that pension asset. But it was a positive at that point in time, I'm just expecting it to pull back, but like I said, that's really out of y'all's control since that money's with the pension administration, but it does get recorded under your financial statements. Total liabilities, 18.6 for the current year compared to 19.1 as you pay down your debt, and if you don't have any new debt issue, that number should drop down a little bit each year as you pay off your bonds and your certificates of obligation. The difference between the assets and the liabilities is the equity. It's called the net position for a governmental entity, $31.8 billion compared to $29.4 last year, so it's up $2.3 billion. We'll see that on the next page. That was the net income on the accrual basis for the city for the year. Some of that is in investment in capital assets, $28.7. That's up from $27.4. That obviously is in your fixed assets. You can't use that to pay payroll with or payables. That's already been spent on fixed assets that are being depreciated over the useful life. The main increase there was the new fire station that was completed during this year that got moved to fixed assets. So that's part of the reason that number went up so much. Unrestricted, $1.4 billion compared to $440,000. So you're unrestricted, which is what you do have the ability to use for operations of the city. Went up almost $1 billion from last year, so that was positive as well. Page five is the income statement. It's called a change, changes in net position. That's on the accrual basis again. The governmental funds, we report under the accrual basis in one part of the report, and then on modified accrual basis, which is the way y'all maintain your books on a month-to-month basis, which doesn't have your long-term assets or your long-term liabilities. I'm not sure if you dreamed of having two sets of books for governmental entities, but that's the rules we got to play by, but on the full accrual basis. Governmental activities, third line from the bottom, increase in net position, $2.5 billion. Last year's $1.97. That is after transfer being moved over from the business-type activities of $2 billion that you did have $2.5 million profit on the governmental activities. Business-type activities, just about break even, negative $211,000. Last year was a positive $195,000. So over the two years, kind of treading water or break even on the water and sewer and solid waste funds. The right-hand column, $2.3 billion is the increase in net position for the city, $2.1 billion the year before, so over the last two years, a little over $2 billion each year being added to your equity, so those are both positive trends there. Page six is the governmental funds balance sheet. This is under the modified accrual basis here. This does, like I said, it does not have your long-term fixed assets, does not have your long-term debts, does not have that pension asset that we talked about, because that's not something that you can run the city with. So this is what has more of a short-term view of what the city has available to spend to operate with over the next 12-month period, 12-24-month period. Total assets, $6.4 billion. Cash is 4.9 of that, have some taxes receivable, some other receivables from other governments, total of 6.4. Your liabilities related to that is $1.8 billion. We have some deferred inflows, which is uncollected property taxes that will stay on the balance sheet until they convert to cash, and then some uncollected fines and fees, total of The difference between your assets and your liabilities and deferred inflows is your fund balance, which is your equity under the governmental fund accounting. Your unassigned general fund and balance, $1.1 billion. That's up, I think, from last year, a pretty good bit, and we'll see that on the next page. Well, no, we don't see it on the next page, that's just on the balance sheet, but I think it was up from last year is what my note says there. Page seven is the income statement under the governmental modified basis of accounting for the governmental funds, general fund. In total, it had a decrease of $1.9 billion, but that included the fire station, which is considered an expense under modified accounting, whereas it's a fixed asset addition on full accrual basis. But you can see your capital outlay for the year, $2.3 billion. That's normally, you know, that'll go away next year since the fire station's been completed, but it does show as an expense under the modified cash basis of accounting. So if you take that into account, the 1.9 decrease primarily is due to that $2.3 billion for the fire station. Right-hand column, the total for all the funds, 1.893 decrease. Here again, that includes your capital outlays. Your revenues were up a little bit, they were 10.7 for the year compared to 10.4 the year before. Your sales tax, previous year was $2.4 billion, is up $2.6, a little over $200,000 increase in your sales tax. Page eight is the budget actual for the general fund. Total revenues, little bit under budget, couple of the categories we didn't quite hit the mark, property taxes being the biggest one there. Total expenditures were under budget. You had budgeted 4.4 for capital outlays, but it ended up 2.3 was what was incurred for the current year. Total, fourth third line from the bottom, in the third column, there's 1.961 decrease. We started at 4.2, ended at 2.2 for the general fund. Page nine is your proprietary funds. They're accounted for under the full accrual basis for both methods, if they don't have the swing in like the governmental funds have. This is just a more detailed balance sheet than what was summarized in the front that we went over. It does have the water and sewer in its own fund and the solid waste in its own column, and then the combined total that rolls up to the front. The water and sewer has a negative unrestricted debt position of $1.5 billion down at second line from the bottom in the left-hand column. Water for the solid waste is a positive billion, 50, combining it to a negative 4.23. One thing I was going to point out to you, the unearned revenues, that's where you receive some money on these federal programs that hasn't yet been expended, and we take that money for certain projects that have to be spent under the guidelines of that grant. Right now, we have $3.5 million that hasn't been spent as intended yet, but as you can see, the cash balance at some point, you know, that money is just in with other cash, but at some point, we're going to have to, you know, if we only got $1.9 million in cash and we still have unspent revenue of 3.5, at some point, we're going to have to cover that in the process. I'm just, from an auditor standpoint, that's a little bit of a, might want to keep an eye on that, but if you didn't spend that money, you'd have to borrow it somewhere else to operate with, but right now, you're kind of borrowing from one hand, but eventually you're going to have to be paid back with the other hand, so I'm just kind of giving you a heads up on that. Page 10 is the saving of revenues and expenses for the proprietary funds. Water and sewer. Had a operating loss of $44,000, the solid waste, positive $644. Water and sewer did have some grand income of $1.1 billion, and then we have the transfers out from those two funds that go over to the general fund. Change in net position, a negative $3.38 for the water and sewer, a positive $1.27 for the solid waste, for combined decrease of $211,000. Page 11 is a breakdown of the non-major governmental funds. They show up just in one column in the front because they're not considered major funds. They just get rolled up together. They include Economic Development Corporation, the police forfeitures, and the Police Forfeitures and the Debt Service Fund, and then a total column there. Page twelve is the change in those funds for the year. The biggest one being a positive increase to the EDC of sixty-two thousand. The EDC transfers a hundred thousand out to the general fund for generally administrative, and then they move for debt service, they moved over five seventy-nine to the debt service, that was part of the agreement, I guess, on the last debt that was issued, but they do help with the funding of the paydown of the debt. Page thirteen is the listing of those annual debt requirements, as I said, each year, unless you issue due debt, they're gonna work themselves down as far as what the balance is. And this just shows over the next five years how much is required, and then in groups of five-year increments after that is what's required to be disclosed on that for your long-term debt. Page fourteen relates to that pension asset that I talked about, that three point eight billion. That's in the right-hand or left-hand column, the brackets around it means that it's an asset, this is a liability schedule, since it's an asset, it's got brackets, your user brackets are not good, but in this situation, bracket is good. Last year was an asset of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, like I said, at the end of this year, three billion eight five, you can see the investment income the last three years, you had pretty good investment returns. The current year, five come five billion, last year, three point one billion, previous year, twenty nineteen, five point seven four eight. So it was positive three, and I'm just looking for that to pull back in this next report that you get. There was a couple of letters, news letters there that we had, I don't know if y'all wanna talk about those, or if there's any questions on the information I've covered, I'd be glad to answer those. We did have the one with the short page on the front, it's just kind of what we call some management letter comments, we discussed those with Lamar, we talked about those, some, you know, a little bit better documentation on the fuel cards as far as odometer readings and that kind of stuff, and then we had talked about the cash on the the fund, the major funds, federal programs that we've got that, you know, we still had about three and a half million, three point six million to be spent, but didn't quite, didn't have that much in cash right now, so that was just some comments that we had for for management and for the city council. The other letter's a little bit thicker, it's required communications, there's not anything in there of concern, it's all positive information, comments that you'd like to have at the end. Talks about our responsibilities, it's, this is the doing effort, y'all's responsibilities. And this year, we're required, we've always been attaching the adjustments to this report. With this year, we're required to attach what we call a management representation letter, that we get the management to sign at the end, just saying we were provided with everything that we need to perform the audit, and nothing has changed since that time, it would cause us to change our opinion. It's just more informational than anything. That was all I had, unless there's any comments or questions, I'd be glad to try to entertain those. But was it, was it?
Yes, sir.
On page nine, or liabilities, where you mentioned the three point five million of deferred unearned revenues, yes, sir?
Yes.
And you were saying that we're gonna have to make up a portion of that, that has been normally expensive, normally the federal government, when they give you money, it's after the fact, you have to, you know, when you get approved for the grant, you spend the money, you turn in quarterly requests or monthly requests to give reimbursement for that money. During the pandemic, they were just pumping out money trying to get things started back up, so they just passed out to a lot of the governmental entities money ahead of time, y'all do, you know, as long as you follow these rules, spend it as best you need in your community. Y'all still got three and a half million of that that had come in, that we haven't spent and turned into, and saying this is how we spent that money, so right now, we either gotta give the three and a half million dollars back at some point, or we gotta show them this is how we spent it. And if we're gonna spend it, it's gotta come out in cash to be spent. So that's, you know, yes, sir.
Many dollars are earmarked for them and specific.
The market probably speak better for what they had to be spent on, but yeah, they, you know, they can't be spent for just normal operations, they gotta be spent, whether it's on improvements to the water and sewer, improvements to the streets, wherever it might be, it's gotta be spent for infrastructure improvements or, you know, water treatment improvements or something like that. It can't just be spent however we want to, we've, we gotta, you know, we gotta turn in reports saying this is how we spend it, it's gotta be something that they got in their guidelines, and they got a lot of stuff that's allowable for them, it's just we gotta put a plan together and spend it to show them that it was spent under their requirements. But as of September, we still had three and a half of that three point eight that hadn't been reported out as being spent for that.
We have till twenty twenty-four to spend it, is that the money we have?
That's a, yes, that's a grant, twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, every year.
You know, we talked about the waste water plant and different things.
That's correct.
Right.
And the pipe person hasn't started yet when this, when this report was done. So a lot of that money has already been spent on the pipe person, but we still have some that we canceled, we'll have to decide how we want to spend the balance.
So has that portion of the money been reported back to them?
That report is due in April.
Okay. So basically, I don't know if you can do this, but basically, since you know the numbers, what is our, how much debt are we in?
Well, your total debt for the city is overall, page thirteen of this report. Your general obligations, we have one point seven billion, which is gonna be finished in twenty twenty-seven. And then you've got ten point one billion of certificates of obligation, which are gonna go all the way out to twenty forty-one. And this shows, like I said, each year for the next five years, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars a year obligated for. That doesn't include this grant money that I'm talking about, that, you know, we don't have the cash on hand, but we've got that obligation, this is just your actual, you know, issued notes or obligations, but you do. You're, you are underwater on that. Grant money.
Underwater.
Well, the total cash on page nine for the business activities is one point nine million. We do have some restricted cash for customer deposits, eight hundred and four thousand, but that's a offset down at the bottom. For, you know, whenever a customer leaves, they're entitled with their deposit back, so we've received that money, but at some point, we gotta get it back, not that there won't be somebody new coming in, but but unrestricted cash is one point eight nine, and like I said, we've got unearned revenue of three point five million, so about a million seven. You know, if we had to use the cash that was there, if we had to borrow, we'd have to borrow or do something to get that million seven to operate off of, but at some point, by twenty twenty-five, we we gotta come up with that shortfall to take care of that unearned revenue. So it's money that has been spent. It's money that was put into the accounts, but it was it's not there to use for this right now, it's been used for operations as opposed to having to go borrow for the operation, saving the interest on it, because you're not borrowing right now, but eventually you're gonna have to spend it. And most of it cannot be used just for regular operations, it's gonna have to be for special, for, like I said, the water pipes or whatever, was it broke or something, it's allowed to go under that or waste water treatment or whatever it's gonna be, which is gonna require cash to do that with.
So Lamar, do we have? Uh, I guess, what that money has been, been spent on that we're, we're gonna have to?
The grant? Yes, sir, that's all logged, yes, sir. Right, it's, it's basically the, the, the hit street, the downtown sewer improvements, and now the pipe person. That's, the projects that have been approved so far that we're working on, and everything's been done except for the pipe person, which is in progress right now. And at some point, we've had these workshops about other things this money could be used for, and so we have to make a decision at some point.
But that, that's not, I mean, I'm not understanding it, my question is, where, where you're telling me is that we have to make up some money somewhere.
Spend all that three and a half, okay?
Yeah, all that's been spent somewhere in the operations of those. Right, so my question is, where, where has that money been spent, and what has it been spent on?
It's just the basic operations of the water sewer fund, the water sewer and solid waste funds have always been pretty tight, I guess is a nice way to say it, especially the water sewer fund, it's been underwater for a while. And it's gradually coming out. All our cash is in what we call the pooled cash account. So we have the money from the general fund, money from the EDC, the money from the solid waste, well, money from the water sewer, all in one bank account. So if there's an account, in this case, water sewer, that's running a deficit or near deficit on the cash, it's gonna be borrowing the cash from the general fund or the EDC or that pooled cash account.
Those things aren't separate, they're, they're in one account, they're not separate from?
That's correct, yes, we've got.
There is general ledger detail, it shows all the expenditures for those funds, which we get when we start our audit, so there is, you know, detailed records of what's been spent out of that pooled cash account.
Okay, so Lamar, get, get that accountability to, to council.
Yes, sir, that's what you get every month, because financially, break it all down for me.
But, or, I guess, for the, for what we're seeing here, if people outline what, what that's been spent, the deficit that we're seeing is, we've gotta make up.
Yeah, this has been years in the making, this isn't an overnight thing, this is something we're gradually trying to work our way out of, this water sewer fund, absolutely. Every year when we pass the budget, that's part of the discussion, but how can we add a little bit more to the fund balance, which basically is another way to say build the cash reserve for that account.
Okay, so you can, you can give us a line at him on what the deficit?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, I don't like the council to see that.
Yes, sir, that's in your monthly reports, but I'll find another way to present it to you that's a little more clear.
Okay.
On page nine, I'm just going, the solid waste fund. It has a due from other funds, which is from the general fund, it, it has a a negative cash balance, which gets moved to a due from other funds. At some point, the general fund may have to move some money over, possibly some of this sales tax contingent, there may be some excess there that can kind of help go back that direction, but right now, that receivable from the general fund is eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which might come into play at some point, you know, when y'all square up those due-to due fronts between the funds. Assuming there's money, like I said, if the growth of the sales tax or other revenues in the general fund allow for making that whole for the other side.
It says to, to find our complete debt, just a bottom number of total debt that the city has. Um, let's say for twenty twenty-three, then that would be the three seventy-nine sixty-three and seven seventy-two just for the year, right? But for complete debt, everything that the city owes, not just by year, but completely what we owe as far as debt is concerned.
What page are you reading that on?
I'm gonna go on thirteen. I might be on the wrong page, I'm gonna go on thirteen.
As for next year, the three seventy-nine is what's due, if you look on the?
Well, I understand it's twenty twenty-three, but what I'm trying to get at is our total debt, not broken down year by year, but the complete total debt.
Okay, we need to go to the bottom line, the one down below, the one point seven two five is the principal balance for the general obligation refunding bonds. And the ten million one fifty-five is the balance of principal due on the certificates of obligation. So you have those two together, that'd be eleven point nine million is your total debt for formal general obligation or certificates of obligation debt of the city.
Yeah, because I'm not talking about, you know, what we have to debt that we incur or that we have to pay every single day, I'm talking about.
Just legal debt requirements, it's, it's one point seven two five plus the ten million one fifty-five are the two numbers that, the two at the bottom, on the bottom line there. And then the interest is just what's gonna be paid out in interest. Yes, ma'am. I think that was part of that twenty twenty issue, the eight point three billion that you had there, that's what I was saying.
Because I'm thinking about the financial health of the city. I'm not sure that, um, I'm just not sure that the city is in a really good financial health.
It's, it's tight, at least, you know, with the amount of transfers that are coming from the enterprise funds over to the general fund, if the general fund didn't have those coming in, that, that wouldn't be in good shape, but that does put a stress on the enterprise funds to be moving that money over, so as a city as a whole is, I know we said we had some positive years, but, but yeah, there is some you know, going forward, maybe some tightening of the belt, maybe, I don't know how you're gonna do that either, but there may be some periods where it's a little bit tight.
So right now, you would say that I, I invest for a break even.
I would say you're trading wire, yeah, I would say.
Breaking even, are we?
Well, on a full accrual basis, we're showing profits, so I can't say that you're going underwater. But it's just, you know, the cash is tight, I mean, you know, we got a lot of money tied up in fixed assets and that kind of stuff, but you, you need those to operate the city with, so.
But if we didn't, you know, if the city was operating just on the general fund alone without any additional monies going into it, then it would be a problem. The city would have a problem.
Under fund accounting, I would agree with that, the full accrual basis, which is not how you operate on, but if we go back over to the general fund budget actual on page eight, if you didn't have the transfers in of two point one billion, and if you took out the fire station, the two point three expense, you're still gonna be underwater, you know? With that two point one billion of transfers that come into the general fund from the other funds, I would say, yeah, you'd be super strapped on that.
Is this considered an internal audit?
This is an external audit, y'all don't have any internal auditors, we're, we're the external auditors, it's not a forensic audit, it's an external financial statement audit, is what it is.
I've asked for a forensic audit.
I know y'all have talked about that, I'm just saying that, that's not the scope of what we do, is, is not what, what that entails.
Um, do you put on, since we just got everything, we're taking a while to read through, so I'm just gonna have to ask questions. Um, do you put on this, um, no assurances provided? Is that part of, is that?
No, that's not, uh, we say that.
No assurance provided?
No, what, what our opinion says is it presents fairly the financial position of the district, we don't have anything about no assurance in there, so I'm not sure where that's coming from, but that's not part of our language in, in our opinions, no.
And you, you have to do specialization of examining the records because it's a government entity?
We as auditors have to have specialized training to be able to do the governmental auditing, it's the continuing education requires twenty-four hours of governmental CPE over a two-year period, in addition to forty hours of continuing education in audit areas every year for our audit, we have a team of five or six that do governmental auditing, and all of us have to have that big debt requirement. Twenty-four hours of governmental and then forty hours per year of continuing education in the audit field, that's that's what we have to live by, in addition to our peer reviews that we get looked at, once every three years, we get an external audit of our work papers. Not for every job that they do, a random selection of our jobs, including the governmental and the single audit, which is part of the governmental auditing. And the single audit, which is part of the governmental auditing.
So those people that have that, um, specialized training, they work on our books?
Yeah, that, only the ones who have that training are allowed to work on the governmental jobs that we do, so our audit team, we, I don't know, we brought all of them out, but we probably brought. Five of the six out to, to do the work on this one.
That was all ahead, and if there's any other questions, please answer them, alright.
Thank you.
Item seven B, consider approval of an application for hotel occupancy tax revenue funds to be used. For the Grove's Knights of Columbus Sixteenth Annual Astale and Allen Fetter's Golf Tournament.
Make a motion, we consider approval of an application for hotel occupancy tax. Revenue funds to be used for the Grove's Knights of Columbus Sixteenth Annual Astale and Allen Fetter's Golf.
I second, have a motion and a second to consider approval of an application for hotel occupancy tax revenue funds. Be used for the Grove's Knights of Columbus Sixteenth Annual Astale and Allen Fetter's Golf Tournament. Do you have any questions?
We have, um, Mr. Leroy Falcon, representing Knights of Columbus, uh, up here. Mr. Falcon?
Uh, I'm just gonna ask, um, interim city manager, Mr. V.
Yes, ma'am.
The, in requesting this, because I, I know they do it every year, but in, in making this request, is there a certain procedure that. Um, Knights of Columbus has to go through, kind of like, you know, the Chamber of Commerce where they have to spend the money and then get the. Um, and to get the funds, yeah, and then they do an application.
There is, there is one, um, and they usually do that after it's, if it's approved, if it's approved here tonight. It'll be the application will go through, and whenever they come back with it, they'll have receipts and stuff, correct, Mr. Falcon?
Right, historically, what, what we've done, we, we do a proposed budget, what the costs are for expenses. And once the tournament is complete, we have two layoff receipts to award and we present an actual, uh, report of expenditures. And then council submits it, uh, whatever they choose to give us, to help to go through all expenses.
Alright, okay, so the, this right here, this that we got, um, with our packet. This is, um, not the exact amount, this you're going to, this will change after you receive.
If, if you look at it and say propose, alright, what we've done is taken their last year's. Uh, actual, what an actual cost. And we didn't factor in any, uh, increase, we just used what we spent last year. So what has our proposed, we assume that the cost was that much again. And maybe even a little more, because we've grown, uh, to maximum thirteen this year.
So after, after the tournament, you get all of your receipts, then you're going to turn in a report and those receipts.
Right, you submit to the, uh, city manager photocopies of the receipts. And it, it, it's all justified by the amount you'll see on the, on the final report, the actual report.
Would we have to come back and, and, um, readjust our approval?
It depends on how you, uh, word your proposal, I think, um, on the, on the motion, whether, um, you could. Make a motion to reimburse for the expenses that they incur. Uh, you could even do up to a certain amount if you wanted to, it just depends on how you want to word your motion.
Yeah, because, um, I, I'm believing that if we have to come back a second time, why don't we just get it done?
Yeah, you could just, you could just make your motion to be, uh, reimbursement for the expenses, um. As listed on the, the, for reimbursement of the project.
And then you could send all that information out too.
Absolutely.
To help justify the expense, I mean, they, y'all submitting us a, a check for our expenses. We've got probably twenty five people who are coming in from out of town. And some of these will be using a hotel motel facility. So we, we deal with, it, it justifies us coming up here and asking for, you know, some funds.
Alright, what I'm saying is, I was just trying to eliminate a step for you so that you wouldn't have to go back and. Um, reapply.
Okay, well, it's not a problem, actually, once the tournament's over, which will be the twenty seventh of April. We'll get together, we'll figure out all our expenses, and we'll submit to the city manager, uh, acting city manager, what our expenses were. And you decide from there. We're not asking for the whole expenses, obviously, that's all it must, we're gonna spend quite a bit. But whatever we can get from the, uh, hotel motel fund, we appreciate it.
Right, um, so would it be, um, uh, would it be any kind of a problem for y'all to, um. Come back and reapply for it? No, I mean, would it be a problem for you to have to spend the money and then?
I mean, we've done it every year, I, I think we've probably been doing this for about seven years. And, uh, you know, it's not, it's not an issue.
So what y'all think, make it where they don't have to come back to do that? You could just say whatever the receipt.
I don't think they need to go back.
Don't go crazy.
It does, it does, um, without the, the Knights of the Community, they unfolded years ago. Uh, sixteen years ago, we were approached by a former city councilman and a, uh, justice of peace and. He was on the board for the Fetter's and he delivered all his hits to the building there. And I mean, they were down to. Tight, tight money, they had, they had money, and on, on behalf of the, uh. My students, we were able to start this tournament, we kept looking.
Mr. Falcon, do you happen to remember right off the top of your head how much was donated last year off the tournament?
Ten five. Ten thousand five hundred.
That's good.
It's a good cause, historically, have we always given the whole sum?
I'm not sure, I did not research, uh, how much we've given, is it?
Thousand bucks?
Eighteen hundred last year.
Let me redo the motion.
If you want it to include a dollar amount, yes.
Made a bunch of ideas, but how do we do that as far as?
Give them a dollar amount?
If you want to give them a dollar amount, you can make the motion for a dollar amount, and anything they spend over that, it's on them. Or you can say, you can word it where we reimburse for all receipts, or, or however you want to do it.
So they, or to leave it open in, to the operating.
So then, I'm sorry, Mark, before you did that, so that means we would be paying the whole five thousand something, whatever?
Or more or less.
If you guys want to wait, they'll have a work session, that's good too, we've got time, we have the money that we raised, we can fight for it.
Would, I mean, well, can I ask, I mean. If, if, if everybody here agrees with it, I mean, if we just gave you fifty two hundred, could you work that?
Okay.
I think it's, I would appreciate it.
Yeah.
Whoever wants to make a motion.
I guess my concern is, if, if it were to run over, and we're trying to. You know, make sure this, the creative, on, you're, you're putting up. Uh, or sponsoring the event, everything, we're done putting burden on. Um, at Knights of Columbus, if we put a number there, then we're locked.
We're stuck in on that number, to the, to the knowledge, we've never given the whole thing before, or we've never given a dollar amount.
In the beginning, I believe, if you go back and check, it might have been in, in the neighborhood of three thousand. They just kind of tilted it down a little bit, I think, um. Like a couple of years ago, it was. Maybe twenty, maybe two thousand, but if I. Figure the right last few years have been eighteen hundred.
So Lamar, with the, with the limited things that we can spend the hotel motel tax on, which is Chamber of Commerce. City or, uh, Confest, things like that, is that fund capable of doing a donation in the five thousand range?
It's capable, um, it's. You know, it's good, they can survive it, it's, that's a pretty good chunk for this, for one.
Do we have other things that?
Based on, based on the applications we've been receiving over the last. So what we've been doing, based on the expenses that, that fund has been, the hotel occupancy tax fund has been doing annually. Um, we've been generating probably about one to two thousand in addition above.
Of what we're spending.
What we're spending, and so this would push us probably breakeven. Depending on how the hotels and the turnarounds go.
That's a five thousand.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's not a whole lot of room for, and if we got a lot of hook turnaround, and a lot of contract guys that are spending a month in a hotel. You spend twenty five days in a hotel, that you don't pay hotel occupancy tax.
That's about twenty five hundred.
So a lot of these contractors that come in, book it for a month, and they don't have to pay that.
I was thinking we're about three thousand money.
But either way, we'll still, being hot money, we still have to demonstrate what is being spent on, and that is within the realm that hot money allows for.
I mean, we're sure we can do this, I mean legally.
It hasn't happened yet, so I, I trust that, and, uh, all things will be on the open up, um, if it's just for operating expenses. Uh, for promotional activities, not for cash prizes or anything else like that, and we'll be happy to. To work with them to make sure they're clear on what it can be spent on.
So you think that's five thousand?
Well, I mean, we can afford it, but I wouldn't say we can do it every single year, I wouldn't want to make a commitment like that by any means.
Okay, but they have prices on here, and we can spend hotel motel tax on prices.
That is correct, it's, it's more promotional. It's, it's supposed to be spent on promotional, uh, items generally speaking to. And the administration around those promotional items to attract people from outside the city to come visit the city and put heads and bets.
Right, so prices is nine hundred dollars, is there anything else on here that's prices?
Uh, number eight.
Okay, so nine hundred and two hundred and seventy five dollars needs to be taken off, because that's price money.
I'm not sure what y'all are looking at, but other things like fireworks, um, alcohol, things like that. No, we haven't, not.
There's no alcohol.
They bring their own.
Subtract this price from the, the total, we get about five thousand.
That's one thousand one seventy five, is that what you did?
Yeah. Not a good person to do that, uh, I just need to make sure it's clear that this is for advertising. And expenses are associated with those advertising to draw people from outside the city to the city.
And it does that.
Okay, so advertising expenses only, is that what you're saying, hotel motel tax can be?
The whole purpose of hotel occupancy tax is to benefit and promote our hotel and hospitality industry in the city of Grove. So the expenses that it's related to need to be in that, in that vein, to whatever we can do to help. That industry, that's generally bring outside visitors to spend the money.
So we would need to know how much is going to be spent on advertising, and then we could make that. That kind of really. I mean, the only thing they've got on here for advertising is a hundred and fifty.
Well, we spent for our brochure, we, what you'd have right here.
It's just that if we spend what we're not supposed to, of that money, there's a problem.
It would open us up for, uh, for audit, for state.
So, we have a problem, we're not solving.
So the forty seven hundred dollars that you would, you would come up with one of those.
Four thousand and eleven, it's five, it's five and eight.
Yeah, but if we can only spend it on advertising and not food and the other things.
But it's what brings people to the city.
And part of it is like if you had an entertainment of some type, if you're going to advertise at some.
Well, that's the golf, that's twenty hundred dollars.
That's part of the draw, yes, that is.
So the tournament is the draw, so it's not just the advertising for the tournament, but the tournament itself is part of the draw.
It's part of the operation of that tournament. And it's nonprofit. Clarify all one shit. Indeed, it's just like if you had a, a rock concert, if you will, and they have, you know, advertise people that come from out of town to go see whoever at the. Whatever venue, that's the band will be paid with those.
With this list, if we eliminate the, the prize. Monies out of this, everything else is to support that tournament, that tournament and the cause, so. We should be good, shouldn't be any problems.
Well, okay, then I don't understand that, because you said advertising.
It's, it's the event and the advertising of the event to draw people.
So the event itself.
The event itself, yes, I'm sorry if I didn't.
You can use, use the dollars for any prize money.
You're not, they're not coming for the food.
Oh, but food on here.
Yes, we have, um.
Which are you using that as a draw to, to bring in, which is a portion of advertising if you're on column. So there you go.
I'm good with that. I commend my motion. I make a motion, we consider approval. Of an application for hotel occupancy tax revenue funds to be used for Grove's Knights of Columbus. Not to exceed four thousand, I said that.
Have a motion and a second to approve an application for hotel occupancy tax revenue funds to be used for the Grove's Knights of Columbus Sixteenth Annual. Astale and Allen Fetter's Golf Tournament, not to exceed. Four thousand. Do you have any questions? No questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor pro Tim McAdams aye, council member Venzel aye, council member Oliver aye.
Aye.
Council member Dugan's.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Mark, can you check into that, Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
I like to say what they have with the Fetter Center, they have board the records, and of course, tonight, we thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falcon. Item seven C, consider setting a date for a joint public hearing on a request to rezone fifty five eighty nine Golfway Drive from R two. And C one to C three.
Is done, did he not come? This was brought up in the planning, it's having me, um, I started.
I make the motion, consider setting a date for a joint public hearing, our request to reset fifty five eighty nine Golfway Drive. From R two and C one to C three.
You want to put the date on there?
Uh, what date we did.
The recommendation's on here, if you want to do that one, if somebody has a problem, we can amend it, but otherwise, we catch it up with all.
Twenty fourth. I made my motion to, uh, have a meeting on April twenty fourth.
Actually following city council.
Follow the city council meeting.
Okay, April twenty fourth.
I will need to stay here.
Right, and that's city council day two, okay, good.
Second, have a motion and a second. To consider setting a date for April twenty fourth for a joint public hearing on a request. To rezone fifty five eighty nine Golfway Drive from R two and C one to C three. Uh, April twenty fourth following city council meeting, do you have any questions? No questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor pro Tim McAdams aye, council member Venzel aye, council member Oliver aye. Council member Dugan's.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item seven A, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty three oh two to authorize a membership for Texas Smart Buy program. Uh, city attorney?
Omar.
At least.
Motion on the second.
I make a motion, uh, consider approval of a resolution twenty twenty three dash oh two.
I'll say, have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash oh two, do you have any questions?
Yeah, please don't request it, that we, uh, join this, uh, government purchasing, um, co-op. Um, so this is, they prefer to buy their.
So this is, they prefer to buy their alcohol testing breathalyzer type tests, field tests from, through this co-op. But we have to, we have to be a member, and to be a member, we have to pass this resolution.
And the cost is a hundred dollars annually?
Correct. And we were a member through two thousand fifteen, maybe sixteen, or stopped. I guess they had to get their kids somewhere else, I don't know, but that's changed.
It says rejoin.
Yes, sir. We, we were a member through two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen, somewhere in that timeframe, and then we stopped being a member.
For what reason?
I dispute conjecture that they were able to secure these alcohol testing kits somewhere else, but that source apparently has ended in.
Any other questions? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tim McAdams, aye. Councilmember Venzel, aye. Councilmember Oliver, aye. Councilmember Dugan, aye. Motion passes. Item seven B, consider approval ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh four amending chapter three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Grove, creating chapter three, advertising, article three, signs to, section three through thirty, sections three through thirty-three. City attorney, or do you need a motion?
I make a motion, consider an approval of this twenty twenty-three dash oh four.
I'll say.
Have a motion and a second to consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh four. Any questions? Mr. City Attorney, you want to read that?
Sure. An ordinance amending chapter three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Grove, creating chapter three, advertising, article three, signs to, section, excuse me, three thirty, section three dash three three, providing for classification, providing for publication by publishing the caption only, making findings of fact, and providing for an effective date.
This is the same as the last one that we covered.
I did remove the editing notes, and then I added the language, just to clarify that we were not dealing with billboards, and this is on page two, section three dash three one, and we were not anyway affecting billboards or other onsite business signs, so we were much.
On page three. Let's see. Under C manner, there was, what we did have there was also not just the one square foot diameter, but there was references to a four square foot sign. I didn't bring the last one we did.
I believe the four foot reference was in the residential real estate sign section at the bottom of that page, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, we had, okay, we had that, but it was in C manner, and I, and I don't remember what it was in reference to, but it did say the one square foot, and then it said four square foot. I didn't know if you wanted to add that, or if you on purpose took it out.
We took it out, because it restricts people's signs to advertise their kids and all that.
Right.
That's why we took it out.
No, this is, this was for something different. It wasn't for that. And the other question I had is that I was notified that one of our residents has cameras on utility poles, and I wondered if we shouldn't address that.
The utility poles are owned by Energy, not the city. That is their problem, not ours.
Well, still, it needed to be brought up and discussed.
If Energy Texas does remove them, that's on there.
Well, like I said, it still needed to be noticed. So other than that, that's all. I was thinking.
Any other questions? Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any other questions? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tim McAdams, aye. Councilmember Venzel, aye. Councilmember Oliver, aye. Councilmember Dugan, aye. Motion passes. Item nine, city manager invoices?
Invoice list for March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, Brent Tag Southwest Incorporated, sodium hydroxide used for pH adjustment at the water plant, seven thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and fourteen cents. City of Fort Arthur landfill fees, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three to February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, sixteen thousand four hundred, Epic Engineering LLC interest, and Howser Ultrasonic Flow Meter and Labor, eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-four cents, for a grand total of forty-two thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I make a motion to approve the invoice list for March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
I'll say. Have a motion and a second to approve the invoice list for March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Do I have any questions?
The ultrasonic flow meter, what is that?
I don't see Troy in here. What it shows down here, it just shows, uh, ants destroyed the flow meter, could not be calibrated, the pricing included clamp, flow meter assembly, and signal converter demo of existing flow meter, installation of new flow meter, commissioning by certified technician, and extended factory warranty. So this is a meter replacement at the plant itself, it looks like, and was destroyed by those crazy hands that get in, tear everything electric. Your best friend, aren't they? That's what that is.
Any other questions? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tim McAdams, aye. Councilmember Venzel, aye. Councilmember Oliver, aye. Councilmember Dugan, aye. Motion passes. Item ten, council member comments?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Monk for his work on the side ordinance. There was multiple revisions, and I appreciate his work on that.
I would like to extend a big thank you and a congratulations to Libby, and the ones that helped her on the Spring Fest, it was a eclipse, there was a lot of turnout, we really enjoyed it.
I agree with Mark.
One more thing, the Easter egg hunt this Saturday, on Spikes Park, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock. Easter egg hunt, with the Chamber of Commerce, ten o'clock at John Spikes Park. And if anybody's feeling hungry, I believe there's still a bit of donations, Easter baskets, animals, things like that. Any other council member comments?
Eric Connet?
Yes.
On behalf of staff, I would like to thank the KCS for Casey Gumbo last week, and the workers. It was fantastic. Thank you all so much.
Yeah, again, I guess that was sponsored by the Grove Chamber.
Thank you.
No other comments, we will adjourn at six eighteen. Thank you.